All right. Good afternoon Bristol Aggie community. This meeting is being recorded and also broadcast live through Facebook so that we can have more than 100 users attending. We are currently looking at expanding our Zoom offerings to accommodate our school community. Before we get started, I'd like to introduce Superintendent Sands if you want to just say hello. Oh, did I unmute you? Give me one second. I'm sorry about that. I think you should be all set now. The Sands. Nope, nope, hold on.
I'm good now. Told me to. Well, hello everyone. I'm so excited to start this school year. I know that this is going to be a challenging year for all of us, challenging for students, for parents, for teachers, for staff, but I also want to impress upon everybody what an exciting year it's going to be. You see the pictures and we have this new building that we are going to be moving into. We have all sorts of new opportunities facing us and I really am going to emphasize what an exciting time this is in the world of Bristol Aggie and for our community. And we are going to work collaboratively to ensure that everybody gets the most they possibly can out of this year. And I just can't wait to have students back. I know we talk about it all the time, the administrators that are in the buildings. We're just looking forward to getting the students back so much. We're so excited. So with that, I'm going to turn it back over to Mr. Braga to fill you in on everything that's going on.
All right. So we'll just continue with our introductions. We also have Assistant Principal, Mr. Higgins. I'm not sure, are you able to chat, Mr. Higgins? I think you may not be able to because of the mic. We also have Director of Community Partnership, Mrs. Van Rotz, who is streaming live through Facebook. I don't know if Mrs. Van Rotz, you want to pop in and say hello? I think I unmuted you.
You did. Hello, everybody.
And also our Business Manager, Mr. Costa, will be assisting with transportation and dining. Do you want to say hello?
Yes, very much so. Thank you very much. We hope that you're all well and very much look forward to you coming back this upcoming year.
Great. All right. So, Mr. Higgins, are you unmuted? Oh, sorry. Now I got you.
Hi, everyone. Just want to say welcome back. Hopefully we'll see you students very soon. I know we are all missing them terribly. It was very nice during Freshman Academy to have some students back in the building. I think every administrator here got really excited to actually hear good voices and not just our own talking to each other. So I look forward to it very much. I'll see you all soon.
Great. And I guess I just want to echo kind of what everybody has already said. We are so excited to be back, at least talking about going back to school and having students in front of us. You know, in order for us to do that, I do want to kind of just throw it out there that we have such an amazing faculty and staff. And as soon as we started the conversation about, you know, hey, you know, what are we looking like to come back to school? Very early on, pretty much from the beginning of the conversations, it was like, we have to do whatever it takes to get our kids back to school. So I know in other districts, you know, they're struggling to get their students back, but we are very fortunate that our staff is just, you know, all hands on deck, whatever it takes to bring our students back to Bristol Aggie safely, of course. So just wanted to kind of meet today to set the groundwork for us. Sorry, just trying to let more people in. Set the groundwork on what to expect for September. Again, of course, this is always ongoing. This is an organic process, so we're constantly updating our fall reentry plans. And even just like Mr. Higgins said, having Freshman Academy here, on Monday, we already made adjustments to some of the operations, specifically pickups and drop off. So we wanted to share that new process with everybody today. So kind of our agenda today, things that we'll be talking about, this is what I've been receiving. Most of our emails is about, you know, signing up for virtual or hybrid. And I know people have kind of set it up and or signed up previously. However, this will be the one that we will use and we'll talk about a little bit more. So whatever was signed before, you actually have to sign it up on this form. We'll talk about that shortly. The beginning of the year paperwork actually was sent from Mrs. Nagara yesterday. There is a correction. It's not due September 4th. It's actually due Sunday, August 30th. So this Sunday, August 30th, when I send out the information from today's meeting, I will correct that. So if you have not completed it so far, you have to have it done by 30th. The reason being is we have to make some, we have to do some time with the paperwork. Also, we created, it's not a top 10, it's actually a top 5 need to know about the transition back to school. We wanted to share with you the school calendar and what to expect with the PD days on Thursdays, hallways in One Direction, transportation, which Mr. Costa will take part of that as well as the dining. And then we just wanted to update parents to let them know that PSATs will not be offered in October. However, working with Mrs. Costa today from guidance, we are looking to host in January. So stay tuned for more information on that. So really, the big piece of this, and we wanted to kind of kick off the meeting with it, is that the Student and Family Choice Survey is part of this slide. It will be sent out right after our meeting today. At this time, students will need to commit to either hybrid in person or fully remote. And of course, if you remember, the hybrid model is two days in school and three days remote. Today, the Wednesday being everybody is fully remote. So unfortunately, we were not able to try to accommodate the virtual academics and in-person vocational or agricultural programs. So you will have to commit and it is committing for first quarter. So in order for you to select either a hybrid or a virtual, it's not like rolling admissions where, you know, one week it can be virtual and the next week it's in person. We are asking people because for scheduling and for us to understand who's going to be on campus and contact tracing, it really makes more sense, well, not more sense, it's really for the safety of everybody to making sure that if you're here, you are committing to be here for the first quarter, which is essentially the 6th, September 17th till like November 20th. So you'll see it on the form. Again, we are asking students and families to make that decision. This form does need to be completed as well by Sunday, August 30th. So Sunday, August 30th, if you can make sure you have those conversations with your family, and again, you are committing for the entire first quarter. Now, obviously, in extreme circumstances, we can certainly look at that on what's going on, but for the most part, we want to make sure it's clear that you can't opt in one week and then, you know, want to go hybrid the next. So making sure that you are having those conversations ahead of time. Also, senior co-op is something that many families have asked about. So any senior who would like to participate in co-op should email Ms. Edlam, who has now changed her name. She was married this summer to Ms. Hamel, so she can get that paperwork started and those students would be able to do virtual classes. So co-op is a great opportunity for our seniors. Let me actually just, I'm going to pause here and see if there are questions. I know Mr. Higgins is monitoring it. Right. So there are no questions. I don't know if anybody has any questions on the hybrid versus fully remote. I'll just take a pause for a second here. All right. Sounds good. Again, these are the kind of the top five questions, I guess, that we've been receiving. Great question. Will schoolwork this year be paperless? We're trying to have that be as much as possible. It's one of the reasons why we adopted the bring your own device policy. So will it be completely paperless? Maybe not, but it won't be two-way. If paper is going out, it won't be coming back. So can the seniors do hybrid with co-op? Yes. Yes, that's a great question. They could do hybrid with co-op, so they could still come in for their academics and then go out for co-op. The schedule is the same. I'll talk about the hybrid schedule in a few minutes. And yes, how do we submit the paperwork for Sunday? It's on the link. So the links that are a part of this presentation, which I'll also be sending out on an email, will be for you to complete. So I'll send a follow-up. And yes, you will need to decide again after first quarter if you'd like to continue in virtual learning or in hybrid at that time. Great question. So we'll go quarter to quarter. Okay. And can you explain more about going fully remote and how that impacts our child's major? Yeah, that's a great question. Unfortunately, you know, for the academics, I'll speak to that piece first. If your child is fully remote, we are using Google Meet. However, for the Voags, Google Meet will not work to broadcast what's going on in the classroom. So unfortunately, you know, the teachers will be preparing assignments for those students who are fully remote and not in school. But unfortunately, as everybody knows, that we can't replicate what we do in person remotely. So but they are going to be creating assignments. Part of their work coming back to school for 10 days is to start to develop those lessons and assessments to make sure that the students that are at home are engaged in our meeting, the same competencies as their counterparts in school. But again, of course, those hands-on experiences will be more of a challenge or probably less than what's happening in school just because of obviously the safety of our students. We want to make sure that we have eyes on them. That's why we do it here on campus. I'll talk about the schedule on that slide. So again, these are the top five that need to know topics that we felt that we were getting. Most of them, we'll go over individually, but it's the face mask policy, the bring your own device policy. We definitely want to make some clarifications on that. And then the hybrid schedule, transportation and dining, and what happens if somebody gets the virus. So we wanted to highlight some of the face mask policy. We do recommend that everybody looks at the link. The link is actually attached at the top here in yellow. That will also be sending out this, this slideshow as well as it's part of the, it will be a part of the handbook addendums that we'll be sending out to families as well. Students may remove masks for eating and drinking. We have received some, a few inquiries on that. Students may remove masks when appropriate. Social distancing measures are in place. For instance, when people are outside, that's one of the reasons why we're encouraging classes to be outside, definitely in the vocational areas, working with the Board of Health, you know, talking about six feet. As long as everybody's outside, then you should be able to remove your masks. Masks can be disposable or reusable. They need to fully cover your nose, mouth and secure under your chin. Be made with at least two layers of breathable material and it needs to go against your face and be secured with ties or loops. So based on the guidance, unfortunately, I know a lot of people, as a matter of fact, we even purchased them for our freshman class, but we found out later on that gators are not adequate, so we are not allowing gators at this time. So we wanted to make sure we communicated that as early as possible to make sure that families had an opportunity to purchase what they needed to purchase in order to be in compliance. Again, we will have disposable face masks for anybody that does not bring them, but it is, it is the assumption that students are bringing their own face masks each day and washing them after they use it as well. Our next big topic, our main topic, a lot of questions regarding bring your own device. Again, a cell phone does not constitute a bring your own device. Students are responsible for charging devices daily. We want to make sure that that's going to be key in order to use those devices in school. The school does not take responsibility for theft or anybody else's damaged devices. We did recommend a device. It is not a requirement. The Microsoft goes. I know a lot of people have reached out, so we wanted to include the specs. Again, we will be buying these Microsoft goes next year. If you purchase them ahead of time, you wouldn't have to pay the lease agreement. Yes, other devices are acceptable for the BYOD, Chromebooks, tablets, iPads, MacBooks, anything with a keyboard, virtually anything would work. And yes, we do have loner devices. However, if you currently have a device, we are asking you that you drop them off next week. We'll have a cart here. The reason being is we want to update everything on that cart and we will reissue another device or maybe the same device. It doesn't matter. And again, part of that will be sending out on here for you to sign up for a loner device. So a few people have said, hey, you know, we didn't have a device initially. We are looking to have a device now. Can we sign up? So this is where you would sign up. We want to know how many devices we need to have for day one. Again, when the students come onboard on Thursday, September 17th, and then the sophomores and juniors on Friday, the 18th. So. Will the Microsoft Go be required next year? Or will we will be purchasing the devices for all students? So it will be a requirement. All students will have to use the Microsoft Go. It's something that we will be purchasing for all students next year. Most devices, okay, face mask, we'll need to follow the dress code. That is currently in the handbook. Okay, thank you, Mr. Higgins. Great, great response. Most devices under constant use will not last a full school day. Are kids allowed to charge while in class? Yes. Great question. So here's the schedule for the hybrid model. Again, Mondays and Thursdays, freshmen and seniors, Tuesdays and Fridays, sophomores and juniors. And then everybody will be fully remote on Wednesday. The expectation on Wednesdays that students are following their A-week schedule. So for the most part, students will be in front of their computer, signing in on, you know, first period, you know, at 8:10 and going all the way through their major. Their major does not have to be online for two and a half hours each day in the afternoon and same thing in the morning on those days, but the idea is that they are checking in. And even on the off days, when the students are not in person, we have scheduled most of the time except for juniors and seniors on their gym days, and I'll talk about their schedule in a minute. We'll not have an opportunity to meet with their teacher, but students will have at least four opportunities to meet with their teacher during the week. So it's very different than what it was in the spring this past year. It will be a lot more contact and the expectations are much higher. And again, we did alter the schedule to allow for 10-minute passing, so students could go outside and take a few minutes for a mask break. One of the things we are encouraging our staff is definitely to be, you know, conscientious of it. If it's a really hot day, maybe even taking a mask break during the middle of class. So students are, you know, only going 20 or so minutes with a mask on. But we felt, you know, 40 minutes was something that was doable. And if we needed to adjust, we'll certainly make adjustments. Oops, sorry. Great. So you want to add? Miss Sands, did you want to answer the question about closing or did you want to wait until we got to that slide?
Sure. I can wait till we got to that slide. There was just comments in the, yeah, there are questions in the comment section. So I just wanted to make sure that people knew.
Yeah, if we can keep the questions to the slide specific and then we'll take general questions after. So, you know, if anybody has any questions about the hybrid schedule specifically, you know, we'll take that. But if anything else, then we'll ask the general questions once we get there. The question is, will there still be an A and B week? For the time being, until further notice, we will only be observing A-week schedules. We'll talk about drop off again once we get to that slide. All right. So the hybrid schedule, and a lot of people have asked, why don't we have the Mondays and Tuesdays, the freshmen and seniors, and then Thursday and Friday sophomores and juniors? We felt that it was a real benefit to have engagement multiple times throughout the week and having it sporadic. We didn't want students to be like, okay, well, I'm checked out. I don't have to go back to school now until Monday and feel like they were off for five days. So with the way that the schedule works, when they come onsite on Monday, say for instance, a freshman or a senior, then they would have work and meet with their teacher on Tuesday. Wednesday would be another contact day and then Thursday again would be in person. We felt that was the best way to keep the students engaged in their learning. And also the way that we broke up the schedule, the freshmen and seniors, it made more sense with the way that the schedule works in terms of Gilbert Hall and trying to keep and trying to limit the amount of people in here. For instance, like the sophomores and juniors are not at Gilbert Hall at the same time, so it made a perfect sense to do it that way. Also, in terms of numbers for dining, buses, breaking up the freshmen and seniors. So the freshmen predominantly would be on buses. Many seniors drive themselves to school. And same thing with the sophomores and juniors. Many sophomores take the buses and many juniors take their own vehicles here. So it made sense the way that we broke it up that way. And we feel pretty confident, we feel very confident that our cleaning will be adequate in order to keep our students safe day to day. So probably the biggest question everybody has coming in is, you know, what are our protocols for COVID cases? You know, I think the biggest factor is going to be, we're going to rely on parents and students really to self-monitor and pre-screen. If you're feeling symptoms, the symptoms of COVID, please stay home and monitor what's going on. We do have a COVID isolation room, which is adjacent to the nurse. So we just purchased some dividers to make sure that students have the distancing between each other. We're also buying HEPA filters in there, so we can make sure that the air in there is clean and it's not infecting anybody else. We do have a separate bathroom facility, which is at the basement level. It's at the bottom of the stairs. It used to be a boys' room. It's now going to be under lock and key from the nurse. So the nurse will monitor the students going in and out. And this, you know, the nurse will take the student, make sure the hallway is clear and guide the student to the bathroom and then supervise them from there. And then the local Board of Health and Superintendent Sands will determine the risks. I don't know if you want to add to that, Miss Sands. Hold on, Miss Sands.
That, really what we're looking at is we need several data points. We're not just, I know that everybody has seen this map at this point, but we are looking, the Board of Health and I will be looking at several different data points before we make any decision whether the school is going to go fully remote and then come back. And it takes a couple of weeks of information that we will collect. We will also look at, because we do have 28 different towns, and even though really Fall River is supposed to be sort of our indicator, we have so many towns that we have to look at that information as well and whether we have kids with symptoms in the school building. So there are going to be a number of different factors. The Board of Health representative and I will be talking constantly about this. I hope that answers the question.
Okay. One of the questions was, what would you consider COVID symptoms? We will send out more guidance. If you feel that you don't know what the COVID symptoms are, there is a screening process. Also, we're getting videos from our nurse that will be sent out as part of the pre-screening. That's a great question. If someone isn't feeling well and stays home but logs into all their classes, will they be marked absent for the day out? As a matter of fact, the DESI just came out and said that we can market that way. So technically, they would not be marked absent. That's a really good question. Thank you for asking that. Are there any other questions about COVID cases or anything to this point before we move on to transportation? All right, Mr. Costa, you're up.
Thank you, Mr. Braga. I appreciate it. I think the questions of transportation services are a lot of the questions associated to some of the parents asking related to when our bus routes will be in place and hopefully we can cover that in today's discussion. But before we get there, Transportation Services has had DESI guidelines that have been put into place that we've been working with our transportation provider, Amaral Bus Services, over the last month and a half, really to understand those guidances and how we can be able to help, support and serve the parents and children that are coming on the buses. A snapshot of that really is, we're very unique here in the transportation services with Bristol Aggie. We're covering over 500 square miles throughout Bristol County, as Superintendent Sands mentions, 28 cities and towns, of which 22 are right here in our county. So these routes, to the best of our capabilities, are being designed right now with the limitations that we have in place by the guidance. Diagram at the bottom kind of gives you an explanation of what our traditional buses on our campus that we service. It's a 77 passenger bus and the guidance has been pretty clear out that the capacity of the bus can really be at 25 passengers. As you look at it, some of the requirements and responsibilities that fall onto the bus drivers and families' responsibilities that have been provided by the guidance are listed there, giving us the opportunity where students are receiving at-home pre-screening, where really the families are taking a responsibility onto that. And then the drivers are taking responsibilities onto managing the vehicle's entry and exit process. It's quite challenging as we kind of pick up our students sometimes in clustered situations at hubs. We're going to be working very closely with these students to understand that the entry and the exit process either at their bus stop or leaving at the school for dismissals need to be ultimately in an orderly fashion in directing students to be able to get into a seating assignments. We're assigning them, at this point in time, looking at the safety requirements with health and social distancing. These requirements are coming through with DESI to really look through ventilating the buses, having windows open, having availability for CT supplies in place, and then also assisting with the routine cleaning and sanitation activities on the bus. So these are just top points related to buses in general as we're picking up our children at bus stop locations and also returning them back home in a safe and orderly manner. We've worked again, as we said, with Amaral, our bus services company, to really realign that. And one of the challenges that we will really mention is the capacity on some of these buses. Mr. Braga, if you want to slip the next slide. We've worked towards these bus routes based upon these guidances and it's been quite challenging, as you can probably tell, in some of our districts. We have some of our high-capacity buses at points in time carrying a significant amount of students. But because of the hybrid schedule that's being created, we're able to offset the capacity to, at this point in time, in almost all of our routes, down to the 25 requirement of passengers on a 77 passenger bus, which is only 32%. We do have routes that currently, right now, in the AM and in the PM, need to still be modified. We've asked our parents through a transportation survey to respond back to us. Of the 397 responses, active data was about 255 that we could take. So we're able to come down onto those buses and take a look at capacity. And within those routes themselves, we are still working on the bus routes to get it to the guidance that's appropriately needs to be put into place by DESI. So we're reaching out in the next few days to the bus routes that are currently overcapacity to the actual students who are assigned to those current buses to make sure that they are officially utilizing our buses, because we need to make decisions with either more buses or extending bus routes with other buses that are on the fleet to hit those capacities. I want to mention that the morning transportation is going to be quite important. Related to the morning transportation is that right now, if you're coming to a regional stop or a hub stop location in these towns that are listed there, Sonnet, Free Town, Attleboro. Um, in these towns that are listed there, Sonnet, uh, Free Town, Attleboro, uh, DR, Swansea, New Bedford and Westport. We need to have these individual children and families reach out to these communities. Uh, we've reached out ourselves, myself and Mr. Bragg, both on the business side and principal side, to make sure that these hub locations are currently hosting. Um, but some of these hub locations are not providing transportation services at their communities. So we need to have families understand that it's going to be their responsibilities if those communities are not providing transportation. To have their child be brought to those community hubs. Um, and that's important to recognize that, so as you will be receiving the bus routes by uh the latest, which will be September fourth. Which will be uh next Friday, um, it could be earlier than that, we're trying to work down to the schedule. But as you receive those and you and you're noticing that you are part of those hub routes and places, that communication needs to be occurring with those communities directly. Um, if you have questions, you obviously can reach out to our office here in the business office, and and I will be sending out after the session. Um, the earliest uh this afternoon, if not first thing tomorrow, a parent letter describing the details within the communication. That needs to go on with these central locations and bus route um communication.
If I, if I could just add, Mr. Costa, I have heard from Upon a Quit, Titan Rehabith and Swansea. Um, and they're fine with the status quo, our students can still, um, once they're dropped off, be inside the building. But obviously, um, they need to make sure that they have masks and, you know, um, making sure that they abide by all safety precautions, so.
Great. Thank you, Mr. Bragg. And to add to that list, Westport has also confirmed today. So we're in a good place with those communities that we have. So the, the component about mandatory bus uh transportation forms, uh, once bus routes are put into place. Uh, we're going to ask each of the families to complete um a mandatory bus transportation form. Regardless if you're taking transportation or not, um, we'd like that confirmation to be put into place. Those transportation forms would be, will also be submitted out electronically and available uh the first day of the academic year. Um, and we have a deadline for them to respond back, and it's critical for us so we can make modifications. Um, as the routes are put into place. And I, I do want to share that, and I, I want to be completely um open and upfront and honest about this. I know we've had the luxury in years past to be able to work through bus routes. And work very uniquely with some of the stops that are associated in the bus routes to be more convenient for students. Uh, this year, uh, we're having, it will be due to the capacity issues that we have onto the buses with our restriction, with our DESI guidance. Um, we have very limited flexibility in shifting bus um stops and bus transportation routes in place. So we, we ask you to be very patient with us in this process. Um, it is obviously ultimately a challenging year, but i- if your bus route changes because of the hour. Um, due to different route um changes with stops. Um, and you were used to historically as a sophomore, junior or senior. Um, utilizing a bus stop that you've had for a few years and that time changes. We want to make sure people are aware that that one request could be a ripple effect to the twenty-five or twenty-four other students on that bus. So please understand that we are a community here, and we're going to do our best to assign uh bus stops that are adequate. Um, and appropriate for their location that's been provided to us. But there will be very limited flexibility for us to be able to make those changes, because there will be a significant domino effect on those routes. Mr. Bragg, I'm not sure if you want to field or have questions be fielded now on transportation services, so if uh.
Yeah, it looks like a question, will we, will we be assigned to a bus route? If yes, how will we be informed?
Yep, great question. Um, bus routes will be uh coming out on September fourth, the latest. Um, the parents and students will be informed by a notification email to link directly to the transportation website. At the Bristol Aggie site, all the bus routes would be listed there, and students will be notified of what bus they will be on at that time. There's a question that says, will the afternoon um bus be at a hub or at a specific stop? So the afternoon buses um don't impact hub stops or are not at hub locations. Those are only effective to morning pickups. I don't see anything else, Mr. Bragg, around transportation, but I'll absolutely be here for any questions that come up.
Do you have the next stop, or is that, is that you, Mr. Higgins? Are you doing drop-off and pickups, or am I? Me? Okay. All right, so um, like I said, based on what happened with Freshman Academy on Monday, we realized that we had to put a better procedure in place. Um, for morning drop-offs and pickups. So some of this was already communicated earlier. Uh, busing in and out of cus- uh, county buses will continue to drop off at their locations at school. Um, however, um, drop-offs for in-county used to even drop off between Gilbert Hall. And um, in the Flori Building, that road is not accessible by buses anymore. So everybody will be dropped off in the rear of Gilbert Hall for in-county, and out-of-county will continue at Gilbert Hall in the circle. However, in-county buses, uh, the students will stay on in-county buses until seven fifty. The out-of-county buses will be able to drop off at the circle and leave. Because it's also going to be the drop-off spot for parents. Parents will have to come through Gilbert Hall, go around the circle, drop off. Uh, just like where you dropped off for Freshman Academy. So the parent drop-offs will happen between seven fifteen and eight-ten at Gilbert Hall. And we also had to change our afternoon pickup based on what happened at Freshman Academy. We have, we're going to have a staggered dismissal, so um for buses and student drivers, they will be dismissed at two-thirty. Uh, we will hold students on buses in classrooms, they will need to remain in classrooms, they won't be able to just wander the halls. Uh, parent pickup will be at two-thirty-five. Uh, and once buses are dismissed, parents will be allowed on campus. So again, we are asking that parents do not come on campus before two-thirty-five. Uh, unfortunately, there will be no place for you to go. We have very, very limited parking, and especially with our construction site right now. Um, so we apologize for that. We do have um a staging area. Mr. Higgins has actually prepared uh virtual tours and directions, as you can see here, these are all videos. Um, on how to use the hallways in One Directions, the first floor and the second floor. We are, uh, let me just take a question real quick. Uh, we are in Attleboro, we filled out Attleboro bus paperwork, is there something that we need to do for BCHS? We will not be using the bus each day for hybrid learning. We'll see, we will not be using the bus each day for hybrid learning, we'll see be reserved. Um, so I, I guess I'm confused, uh, is the family virtual or in hybrid? Or just some days you're ax- asking for the bus? Okay, hybrid, so maybe just some days. I believe, Mr. Costa, uh, correct me if I'm wrong, there'll be assigned seats on bus. I think you have to, hold on, that's correct, right?
Thank you, Mr. Brad. Yeah, thank you, Mr. Bragg, I was looking through the unmute piece of it, yeah. We, the first question is, we received notification from Attleboro of who the roster of students that were uh assigned to the Attleboro buses. Um, that's the first piece of one of those questions. The second component of it is. We will be, there will be assigning seats on the buses, and that's, that will be also be occurring. So we need to understand a little bit more, and I believe that's Olivia coming through, if we need to send that a little bit more about what days that you will be utilizing the buses. We want to make sure that the capacity on that bus is going to be able to serve um each of the times that you're coming in a hybrid situation.
Um, we, thank you. We also have a good question about, uh, will dismissals if a student must leave early work the same as they did before? Um, I guess I'm thinking if a student has like a doctor's appointment or something, yes. One of the things I do want to make mention, though, however, is that parents are not allowed in the building. Uh, we're going to be using um your phone call for you to call, call us, and then we'll verify your identity. And we'll have more information about this before students come back. We'll ask you some security questions of your child, um, verify that the number that you're calling from um matches our student records. Uh, so it is important, again, that beginning of the year paperwork, that the information, the cell phone number, the home phone number, whatever you're going to be using to dismiss your child. Is that number. Uh, the child will then get dismissed and go outside. The same thing goes if your student forgets their lunch, um, your, the parents won't be allowed in the building. We'll call the student down, again, we'll verify it, the student will come down, go outside and meet their parent uh to pick up their lunch. So um, I hope that answers that question. Great question, yes, it's, it's not that the parents have to be here at two-thirty-five, we're asking that parent pickup, thank you for asking that. Be no later than three o'clock, so from between two-thirty-five and three o'clock, parent pickup. Um, we just want to make sure that um, you know, that the building is cleared. And so after two-thirty-five, what will happen, we'll dismiss students um to, to be able to be dismissed. And any students that are not picked up at that time, we'll ask them to go into the gym and wait until their parent gets here. That's a great question. Ms. Higgins, did you want to talk about these pieces, or did you want me to keep going? Me or me? Okay, so um, Mr. Higgins is actually, we, we threw up the drone here. As you can see here, there is no driving access anymore in between the Flori Building and Gilbert Hall. So now the out-of-county districts will be set up, um, already lined up this way. So Mr. Costa sends out the bus forms and bus assignments, you'll know exactly where your bus is. So the buses now are going to be lined up three here in this drive, there will be no parking here anymore. There used to be some student parking available here, it's no longer available. I'll talk about student parking in a second. Uh, three buses here, and then three buses will be lined up where the old auditorium and now the new Arbor Clinic Lab is. And again, out-of-county bus drop-off as well as parent drop-off will be here. So the out-of-county students will be able to get off the bus, they have to report to the gym. Uh, that will be the only space for students to go to wait, they can't wait in the hallways or any of the classrooms. Then we'll dismiss at seven fifty for students to be able to um get off their buses. Students will be able to enter from their own personal vehicles, and we'll also dismiss um in the gym. So we'll have staggered dismissals as well um at that time. If you sign up for hybrid, but then transportation is an issue, can your child change to full remote? Um, uh, you know, the answer is yes, however, we want to make sure that we have transportation in order to get your child here for hybrid. If that's, if that's a choice the family makes, so we're going to do everything we can to make sure that we have the transportation. So parent pickup, um, if you do get here before two-thirty-five. And what, what we're allowing you to do is to have a staging area here, as you can see here. Um, it will be the first row of this row, as well as this row up against the street, where parents would be allowed to park. Obviously, once the buses roll by, uh, parents will be able to exit and go pick up their students at Gilbert Hall. So if you do get here, we're asking that you do not get here before two-thirty-five. But if you are here but before two-thirty-five and the buses are still on campus, this will be a place where you can stage and hang out and park. There will be no cars here, they will be uh, uh, no longer parking here as of the first day of school. So these two rows will be open for parent parking, for parent pickup. Again, just parent pickup, if you could wait until two-thirty-five, that would make things much easier for everybody. Student parking, um, when the students left, um, this was all uh dirt and gravel. So it has been paved here, we have eighty-one parking spots. Um, so we will, um, part of this presentation, again, will have uh an opportunity for students to sign up for parking. I know some people have already contacted Mrs. Dias, I recommend that you also fill out this form just to make sure. Uh, but we have about thirty-five or so students that already signed up, if you could also sign this form, that would be great. Numbers unfortunately haven't been assigned yet, so it's not like you can ask for like spot number seventeen. Unfortunately, you will be assigned a parking space. Um, if we do have to double up, it's one of the reasons why we did the schedule the way it is. So juniors and seniors may have to share a spot. If we go, um, if we go into uh in-person, full in-person, and we need the spots. Um, we are, it'll be whoever signed up first. So you do need to have your license and a car in order to sign up, so do not fill out the form if you do not have a car. And you are ready to sign up on day one. Is that, is that me? Did I do that? Yeah, oh, okay, sorry about that. Um, I don't know what just happened there, I'm sorry, very sorry. So that's student parking, again, just fill out the form, I'll be sending that out after our meeting. Uh, it'll probably be tomorrow, all of these forms and everything will probably be sent out tomorrow, just so we can finalize the video. It does take about an hour and a half for it to download, and then we have a meeting with freshmen at five o'clock today, so it probably won't get downloaded today. Oh, no. I don't know what happened. I don't know what happened there. Higgins, any idea? Sorry about that, I'm having a little bit of tech- technical difficulties. Um, so we also wanted to provide everybody with a map of the direction of the school. Again, the hallway directions are only during dismissals and passings. So the beginning of school, the end of school, and in-between classroom periods. Um, obviously, if a student, you know, leaves a classroom, they're in their science classroom here. Uh, and they need to go to the bathroom, which is upstairs, this might be a bad one. So say they're here in the science classroom, they need to go to the bathroom, they'll be able to walk against the arrows. And come back to class and not have to go everywhere. But as you can see here, this main floor, this is where you would go upstairs, traffic only. So if you're leaving your science class, you would need to go up here, go upstairs, and then you could go to either your English class. If it's on the second floor, your math class. And then you would have to use either the middle staircase to come down, and you could go this way. But if you needed to use the middle staircase and go this way, you wouldn't be able to, you would have to use the far end stairs. So the, the stairs next to the gym are up only, and then the stairs next to Mrs. Savage's room. Um, uh, the parking lot side is up, is down, excuse me, up only. No, this is down only, excuse me, and this is up. Um, and then the middle staircase is uh, you can use it from the basement to go up. And you can, you can access downstairs from the second floor. And then, Mr. Higgins, is this correct, this arrow right here? Do you want to talk about this at all? Yes, is the thumb up yes or no? Yes, okay.
Um, so, look, I'm just, I'm sharing off to Mr. Lynn, the special board director, so we're both wearing masks, so if you can't see my face, I'm sorry. Um, so looking at this, on each floor, you have um your arrows to show you where you are going to be going in direction. So, Mr. Bragg, I just can't click on it, so the arrows on the first floor are also video links. Um, there are video links to the main entrances, um, from the basement, from the first floor, from all around the school, there are videos going around. Um, just to give you guys a little bit more familiarity, uh, especially if coming in as a freshman.
Can you see this, Mr. Higgins?
Yep, we can see the video.
When on the first floor of Gilbert Hall, students are instructed to travel in one direction. They may use the stairs located closest to the gymnasium to go up. And the stairs located closest to the student parking lot to go down. They cannot use the middle staircase unless coming from the basement floor.
So throughout uh those three slides, you will have uh several videos going uh to explain the traffic. And how you're supposed to walk to the hallway, so again, during um high-traffic passing times, uh, we need you to follow those directions. Uh, they do not apply to when you are using the restroom during the middle of class. Um, so. So we do have them for all, all floors with the arrows and graphics. Um, so again, just the gymnasium is the up staircase, the student parking lot, which now be the staff parking lot, will be the down-only staircase. And then the middle staircase will be used for coming from the second floor to the first floor, or from the basement to the first floor. Um, so that's kind of your middle catch-all to get to the first floor. Um, and then for traffic, the second floor goes from the gymnasium side to the student parking. And then the basement and first floor go towards the gymnasium. I know it seems a little bit crazy, but you get used to it pretty quickly. And it really will help out with uh having students uh in close contact with each other. So, if you have any questions, you can reach out to me by email, I'll, available pretty well.
Mr. Costa?
Yeah, thank you. The staff in the dining facilities, which our manager Jay Lee and the facilities department and its director have done a great job. As you can take a look at the south side seating area that's been put into place. This has been allowing us to be able to work through what has been the hybrid model for reentry. Services will be a little bit, as Mr. Bragg had noted of it, will be longer this year as it's a 45-minute window of time for each of the lunch services. We find it to be very critical for us to be able to allow students to have a social designation and a place to be able to relax a little bit after they've been in their classes. And so this, this assignment of outdoor seating will be helping us. In the near future, we'll also be tented because of the weather and elements that are coming into place. So as you can take a look at the schedule, in the Monday to Thursday rotation, our freshmen and seniors having first lunches, freshmen, and second lunch will be seniors with an in-between break to allow us to be able to do a cleaning of the facility in the dining hall, interior, and also exterior. And then again, the rotation on Tuesdays and Fridays for sophomores and juniors. Our DESI requirements for our reentry guidance let up for a few areas. We have very limited restrictions. And we have restrictions and give us limitations in seating indoors and also with our capacities for outdoors when we install, in this case, a tent. By doing so, we're able to, and we'll be working with our principal's office to look at assigning seating in our dining hall. As we look at students coming down for each of the rotations, it's important for us to maintain the social distancing that needs to be required. We will have students assigned in our dining facility, indoor and outdoors. We will also be dismissing students to be able to go to the dining serving area, which the food service staff will be joining us, looking through the handling of all food and the serving of students. We've made a decision for food service that we will not be doing a, we'll call it boxed lunch. We'd like to continue the same quality of service to our children as best as we can by providing a scratched meal, home-cooking meal, as the Aggie is known for. And by doing it, our food service staff are beginning the training process for and only handling the, the food and the service for students. So, and that will come from the assignment of seats to the designation in line, to the serving in the line, and then back. At the end of lunch period, the students will also be dismissed by their tables in their assigned seats to, again, leave in an orderly fashion. This is the only ability for us to maximize on the seating that we have, both indoors and outdoors, and to still continue the social distancing that needs to happen while by serving inside of our cafeteria in our exterior area. I did mention there will be a tent. We're installing one. You'll notice that our students who love to be outdoors will do so in all elements. But we obviously want to be cognizant for them. So we're working with a tent firm to have that installed within about a week or so to allow that outdoor dining experience in the front of the facility.
Next slide?
Yep, thank you. Just wanted to remind families again, we do have a free and reduced lunch program. And the free reduced lunch application is embedded in this paper here and will be included with, inside of the child's packet and available on our website. It's encouraged, obviously, to fill this out. The price points, obviously, for breakfast is listed there. We will be serving and available, have breakfast available in our main dining facility, not in Gilbert Hall, but only in our main dining facility. That's available there as a, from a reduced price point and a regular point. And lunch, again, is also listed there for a reduced and a regular lunch. We're working now to finalize an in-house prepayment system, working with a firm called myschoolbook.com. Many of you all who have other children in other districts may utilize this. That would, we're looking to move that forward for the start of the school year, if not very closely into the first couple of weeks in. We will still, again, will certainly be accepting cash in a money order, but no personal checks. So we're encouraging at this point in time to, once the prepaid system is in place, we will be sending out communication and literature out to our families about the program. And students will have an identification card, and they need to have it with them for the purchase of an ID and know their eight-digit PIN number. We were looking, we're looking to a contactless solution. So as students have their identification card, we will have scanners available to scan the identification barcode for lunch purposes. And also, if the students are understanding of the eight-digit PIN, we will then have that be entered by our dining services staff. So the students will have a contactless solution for them to not be able to do that at our PIN pads. I also want to mention out, although we're, we're, we're within the confines of, in a COVID environment, and we're working very carefully to make sure that the food service that's being served, as you can tell, is very, is very listed towards a home-cooked meal. We want to offer students the opportunity to have a meal of them here on the campus. But we are going to be very much looking at the dietary restrictions. Our food services manager will be working with our student services staff in the event that there are dietary restrictions that are going to be listed out. And we want to make sure that we work very closely with the families to meet those needs during, and as we've done in years past, within any restrictions they have. So confidentially, we would like to know that from families, if there are, ahead of time, any concerns that they have dietary, that we can work with them prior to the beginning of the school year and be prepared. I see a pop-up on a question. Will the microwave still, microwave still be available in the lunchroom? And the answer is yes. It's a simple question. I thought I saw one related to water. And I think it was, will, it says students are allowed to bring their own lunch to school. Mr. Higgins answered that. And do we have bottled water? We'll have Felix stations, yes. So thank you, Mr. Higgins and Mr. Bragg for answering this.
Are lunch options posted somewhere, Mr. Costa?
Yeah, there will be. The lunch menu will be posted online, but we'll also include that in the, in the, in the Aggie Weekly that does go out, and a link to those calendars each month directly in that one.
Can students choose who they sit with at lunch? I'm glad somebody asked the question. So we will allow students to seat themselves day one. However, we will be having assigned seating. So wherever they sit day one, we will be taking attendance, and students will have to be seated there in order to help us with contact tracing. Any other questions regarding dining services? Can students choose who they sit with at lunch? If they are placed outside, do they have to sit there in the winter? Mr. Costa talked about us having a tent. We would have heating out there. Obviously, you know, we're not going to make students sit out in the cold. We're a little bit more humane than that these days. So, no, we'll take care of them. Is there flexibility? Again, we just want to make sure, we've been preaching this. You know, we're expecting our, our teachers, our families to be patient and flexible. We are so going to do the same. So we understand everything, you know, could be changing. Who knows what's going on in November, December, and January, when things get a little bit more cold. But we want to make sure that we are creating an environment that houses our students here. Our priority is to make sure our students are coming to school and safe. And so, you know, if that requires us having heating outside and we can afford it, then we'll do it. If, if we can't do that, then we'll have to find another option for lunch. So it's an ongoing conversation. Can we reach out to for dietary restrictions? Do you want them to contact you, Mr. Costa?
I did. I'm answering that question that was asked to the public and to the private. Yep, they can contact me. And I will post also our food services manager's email address so we can have a confidential conversation.
Okay, your email, do you want to let them know?
Yep, I'm going to post that out there so people can have it. There's been a few questions to my email directly, so.
Okay, great. Any other questions regarding dining? We are coming up on some time here. Regarding freshman lunch, dining, seating arrangements, sure, we can look at that at a later date. So I did want to just share some additional information before we conclude here. We do have another meeting at 5:00. Again, just to kind of reiterate the beginning of the year paperwork, if you could have that completed by Sunday, that would be excellent. We really appreciate that. The school calendar, PD. So over the years, we've had one professional development day, half-day per month. Currently, it's in the calendar as Thursday. Because of our schedule, we would observe that on a, it's on a Thursday, we would observe it on a Wednesday. So we would observe it on the virtual day. So it would not impact the Monday, Thursday rotation with the half-day. So just to be on the lookout, we would make note of that in the Aggie Weekly. We already talked about the dismissals. And we already talked about the PSATs. And yes, guidance is available to assist with college and career readiness. They are in sight with everybody else. They'll do their best to meet with students in person, as well as virtually from their office. So they'll have both virtual office hours for the students at home, as well as in-person office hours when the students are on campus. So we want to be able to provide the students with the same support that they would have, regardless if they're virtual or in person. To prevent paper transfer of the virus, will students be able to strictly take notes on their devices? Yes, that's, that's the reason why we're doing BYOD. We are encouraging, again, the, the next 10 days that we're going to be working with our staff, we're working with them to look at a lot of different solutions to prevent paper, the transmission of paper and the disease. So we are certainly very much aware. That's why we're adopting the bring your own device policy. On Monday holidays, how does that work? Great question, something we answered early on. We would be observing it on a, that person would take the Wednesday shift. So we wouldn't be meeting virtually that week. If there's any holiday where it's a four-day week, we would skip virtual and meet four days that week. Are there any other questions? For the good of the order here. Do we email those forms back? Or do we, no, you don't not have to email the forms back. It's a Google form. So as long as you submit it through the Google form, you will not have to email the forms back. Again, we're trying to be paperless as much as possible. We want to keep everybody safe. So hence, we did the Google form. As part of the Google form, we also eliminated a lot of the same information that you would fill out from form to form, especially like your name, address, student name. So that's only in one form. So if you could just fill that out, it would be greatly appreciated. Will there be after-school academic help for students? Unfortunately, no. Students will be dismissed at 2:30. Any after-school help will be done virtually for students. So in order to make sure that the buildings are clean, we have to pretty much start right at 3 o'clock. So with the dismissals, especially with the staggered dismissals, there are no after-school help right now. They will be available. Again, the office hours are on their off days. So they will be able to check in and meet one-on-one with students during that time. And we will reassess as the year goes. But to start the school year, there will not be any after-school hours at this time. What will the virtual days look like? They will look very much the same. The students will be logging in. The teachers will be using Google Meet and broadcasting from their classrooms. So the student would sign in from their home. The teacher would mark them virtual present or virtual absent. And it is something that we have to report to the Department of Education. And the students would be logged in all day long into their classes. What do we have? Some devices that the school can loan out to students that are not able to, oh, sorry, Mr. Higgins. All right, Mr. Johnson, I'll look at that in the Google Doc. All right, thank you. Any other questions? I think I just answered the question about the virtual day schedule. I think I just answered that. The virtual day schedule and the hybrid schedule, it's going to be exactly the same. Hybrid is that the students are in person. The virtual is the student is at home, following the same exact schedule. Is there any information on the possibility of sports? I know the MIAA did delay the, well, they're looking to delay the season to the spring, to have all three sports in the spring, late spring. We'll start and have a winter sports instead of December, starting it in January. As far as us, again, it was more of a budgetary decision in order to save our staff so we could have hybrid learning and have in-person learning and our teachers in front of us. So at this time, there isn't really an update. The only sports program that we have in our budget currently is spring sports. Will students' clubs meet virtually? The only student clubs that we are currently funding at this time, pretty much all the activities and sports were canceled, except for junior and senior class advisor, National Honor Society, FFA, and GSA. Is the PTO going to be meeting this fall? Yes, great question, Ms. Nickerson. As a matter of fact, they're going to be on our call next with the freshman orientation. I believe their first meeting will be the first week of November. So stay tuned for more information. They have a lot of exciting information coming out, especially with online apparel and an online store for you to purchase a lot of, a lot of goodies. So there'll be some information. We will be starting our Aggie Weekly again next week. So I know everybody's excited to get the information. But, so, stay tuned for all that info. If there are no more questions. So all students begin on the 17th, yes. So correct, the sophomores and juniors will be virtual on day one, and the freshmen and seniors will be onsite day one. That's a great question. Thank you. All right, I think, I think that's going to be it for us today. If you have any questions, again, you could always reach out to us. We're more than happy to answer as many questions as possible. Most likely, we will have another one of these, a quick check-in right before school starts again, to try to answer any more questions or if anything changes. So, you know, we, we, we heard your voice loud and clear, where, you know, you didn't want to just be communicated via email. And we always appreciate the opportunity to communicate with our families and have this type of dialogue. So thank you, everybody. Please be safe. We hope to see you in, in two weeks or so. So thank you, everybody. Have a nice day.